Do you want to wait one moment for Eric?
I think we've got a quorum we can get rolling. It's going to take a bit for to get through the preliminaries here. So why don't we just get started and then and then he can he'll jump on.
Okay.
So I'd like to welcome everybody. This is our City of St. Helena Special City Council Meeting Thursday, May 27, 2021, and Cindy will get us started with the remote access and the Spanish language interpretation information.
To participate in public comment by phone, you would dial 669-900-9833. At the prompt, you would enter 837-7125-3089, press pound, and during public comment, you would press star nine to speak. And this morning's meeting will be will have Spanish interpretation. To access interpretation, you will need to use a Zoom application from either your cell phone, tablet, or computer. Instructions on how to use the Zoom app are listed in English and Spanish on the agenda posted on the city's website. Once you join the meeting from the Zoom application, you will see a small globe at the bottom or top of the screen. Click on the globe, and you will be able to access the live interpretation. Marcia and Claudia are are interpreters this morning. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I'd like to do the pledge here. So if folks could mute your mics and put your hands on your heart and follow with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And then we'll move to our roll call, please.
Mayor Eldred.
Here.
Vice Mayor Doring.
Here.
Councilor Chateau.
Yes.
Hardy.
Here.
Hall.
Here.
Very good, and we'll move to our adoption of the agenda. I'll ask the city clerk if there have been any changes to the agenda.
No, there's no changes.
Thank you, and with that, I'll ask for a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
A roll call, please.
Councilor Hall.
Yes.
Chateau.
Yes.
Hardy.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Doring.
Yes.
Mayor Eldred.
Yes. So now we'll move to public comment, and this is a special meeting. So under California law, public comments at special meetings are limited to subjects on the agenda item on the agenda only. Therefore, public comment will take place during consideration of the item, and each person's comments shall be limited to four minutes. We have two items today. The budget workshop on the water and wastewater, and also the review and confirmation of the city's five-year streets and CIP plan and overview of summer 2021 street maintenance projects. My we'll open public comment for those separately. My thought is to is to work through the first item and get to 10 or 10:30 somewhere in there, maybe perhaps take a break at that point if we need to, and then push forward, but we can sort of see how we are as we go forward. So with that, I'll move to our item 5.1, and this is Dr. Oh, I'm seeing Councilmember Hardy.
Thank you, Mayor Eldred. I just wanted to let everyone know I have a hard stop at noon. I have no problem if everyone needs to carry on without me, but I do have to leave the meeting to go into another meeting at noon. Thank you.
Right, thank you. We'll try to keep things focused and be precise with our timing. So thank you for letting us know. So with that, I'll hand it to unless our city manager has some input here, I'll hand it right to Dr. Mitz, our finance director, to get us into the budget workshop on the water and wastewater.
Great, thank you very much. Let me go ahead and share my screen for the PowerPoint. So can everybody see my PowerPoint screen?
Yes.
Like a thumbs up. Perfect. Thank you. Thank you. So stated, this is the St. Helena Budget Workshop number two. And so the workshop workshop objectives this morning is to first provide a review of the Water Wastewater Fund, an overview of the draft budget for fiscal year '22, receive any feedback from the city council on the water wastewater revenues and expenses projections, to review the current CIP list, and then also review have get feedback on the current CIP list. And as you know, the item from the other night on the streets has been continued to today. So when we get to the street section of the CIP, which I prepared and which was which was published as part of this workshop, we are going to be skipping over that particular section since it will be addressed in detail by by John Wagner in the next item. So first, I want to talk overall for water and wastewater, the revenue impacts. We are still seeing some implications from COVID-19, and it is an assumption, but we pretty feel pretty strongly about that we that it is a direct impact of COVID-19, that we are seeing an increase in our aging balance. And what this is, is this is unpaid bills for water and wastewater combined. So you can see the top line. It gives you what the aging the aging date of 5/24/2021 versus 5/24/2020, which was a year ago. So you can see as you go across, the balance due over 120 days, you can see it is increasing from what it was a year ago. So overall, our aging balance is 366,000 in what that's compared to 223,000. So we are seeing that continual impact, and we are continuing to monitor that. In addition, in factoring the 2022 budget revenues, we also are estimating decreased water use due to the water conservation that's implemented right now under the current Phase II emergency. And this may directly impact our water and wastewater revenues. While the water revenues or the wastewater revenues are based on winter average, the wastewater revenues for consumption for non-residential is based on actual use. And so we are expecting some that we are expecting this to affect our overall our water wastewater revenues. And I see a hand up from Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Dr. Mitz. I was just curious if we have a policy or how how are we following up on collections, particularly those over over 120 days due?
Yeah, right now.
Who these folks are? Are there tiers of individuals or businesses or?
We do know who these folks are. They do their by individual account. And so the aging report we run, it's it's multiple pages, probably about 30 pages. So it has a line item for each individual. Every time a customer gets their their account balance or their sorry, their bi-monthly billing statement, it shows an overall account balance in there. Right now, we have not sent anybody to collections. Our typical way to be able to collect funds on this is that we physically shut off their water, and so that does usually motivate people to actually pay their water bill. It's a very strong motivator. However, right now, under COVID regulations, we are unable to shut off water. So we no longer have that mechanism under COVID.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So again, that is an overview of water wastewater, some of the revenue impacts that we are facing. So and for the expense side for both water and wastewater, it's the same as the general fund. We did let departments know we are remaining very fiscally cautious in our expenses. Expenses did remain status quo with a few exceptions. The first is the restoration of salary and benefit concessions that were made during the fiscal year '21 budget cycle. We did restore 50% of training budgets, and then we also did ask that if any departments had increases, that they we had only considered them with appropriate rationale. So getting into the way the water revenue, so you'll see the 2021 adopted budget was 6.8 million, and the fiscal year '22 draft is 6.9 million. The only increase is typically what we do for both water and wastewater, we would increase the revenue projections based on the automatic increase to rates, which takes place each November. We do have a rate increase coming up in November 2021. However, this year, because of the implications of the water emergency and knowing that we are asking our all of our water customers to conserve water, we actually did not increase any of our water or wastewater revenues for consumption. But we did include a slight increase on the water side for the penalties that we are going to be imposing. We do not know what they are like. They're very hard right now to try to monitor, so that's going to be something that we will be looking at on a monthly basis as we know what those penalties are. So you will see a slight increase in the water revenue, and that is due to the penalties, because penalties are only incurred on the water side and not on the wastewater side. For the draft water expenses, so again, we wanted to show really quickly across the board what the fiscal year '19 was, fiscal year '20 actual, fiscal year '21 estimated, and then fiscal year '22 draft. So you do see overall, we are looking at a reduction in our water expenses, and that is primarily due and you'll see a couple of categories where you'll see increases versus decreases. And I'm going to get to my notes really fast on a different screen. And so overall, you'll see a you'll see an increase in the salary and benefits, and that does have to do with the restoration of the concessions. You'll also see an increase in the services. That is primarily due to a contract that we have to get temporary help at our water treatment plant, because we are down two staff members right now. We do have an active recruitment. However, we do due to water regulations, we do have to have certain certifications at the water treatment plant as well as the wastewater treatment plant. And so that is why you see the steep increase in that contract. And then you do see a decrease in your capital expenses, and that had to do with fiscal year '21 one-time expenditures for the for water treatment plant upgrades that were considered part of operations and not part of CIP. And then you will see a decrease in transfers right at the bottom. And what we typically do is that is a transfer that goes over. It's it's your net revenues over expenses, and we transfer the remaining balance over into water CIP to help support the water CIP projects. We do that at a later date, so right before we solidify the final budget. That net difference is we will we will factor it into a transfer, so that's always done at a later date. And so just want to let you know that's why that is only showing 50 as opposed to a lot more as you've seen in the other fiscal year. So when we look at the overall draft net position for the water side, we are looking at a starting fund balance of approximately 4.4 million. Our revenues is 6.9, our draft expenses is 6.6, almost 6.7, leaving a fun estimated fund balance of $2.6 million, which is 70% of the net position. And again, this does not include any transfers to the CIP fund for net balance. And I am looking at that number, and I I'm looking, I might have had a typo on that. I feel like that should be a little bit higher. I feel like that actually should be a four instead of a two, but I will confirm with that, and I'll have Mandy confirm for me. So moving on to the wastewater side. So again, our wastewater revenue.
April, if I could just jump in for just a moment with a question on the water side. So in terms of looking at that net position, if we're looking at at bonding or, you know, looking for funding for our projects, et cetera, is is there is there a possibility that this can be sort of looked at as a as an asset to to leverage against in terms of upgrading the system? And and does that work differently in our water and wastewater than it does in our our normal regular budget in terms of whether whether our net position gives us some equity to, in a sense, leverage against for upgrades?
Yes. So our net for bonding capacity, we do we have current bonds out on the water and wastewater side that paid for previous CIP projects. And so as part of those bond covenants, we do have to maintain a 1.2 ratio for our debt coverage, which means our it's our revenues over expenses. So our net has to be at that 1.2 ratio. Right now, we are meeting that debt ratio, and we do, and it does not include debt service payments. So that is a that's something to keep in mind as well. For future CIP projects in our current rate study, we do have it built in that we will be taking out some pretty significant debt in the next couple of years. And so if I've been looking at this draft CIP budget, you'll see debt issuance, and so that is built into our current rate structure. So yes, so that is something that we do need to we do need to pay attention to, and that does factor into that net position.
Thank you, and I'm seeing Vice Mayor Doring with a hand up.
Maybe I misunderstood the question. I assume the question, maybe the mayor can clarify, was whether we can rely on the the value of our assets when we are going out for debt financing. And my understanding is we rely on the revenues to that we receive to those two enterprises. Is that correct? Maybe I misunderstood the question.
I think both I think I'm looking for something that looks at both the assets as as well as the revenue. And so just some clarification there is is welcome. Thank you.
Yes, Vice Mayor. Yes, Vice Mayor Doring is correct. It is based off of the revenue for both the water and the wastewater system. So we don't we don't bought. We don't finance against our current assets. We actually finance against the bonds are issued based off of our capacity to pay them back via the revenue.
Thank you. Councilmember Hardy.
Thank you, Mayor Eldred. Long as we're pausing here for some questions, I want to go back to the projection of revenues. On the revenue projection for '21-'22, does that take into account the water conservation measures required by our Phase II emergency?
Yes. So we did take that into account, knowing that there is going to be water conservation. So typically, each year, because of the established rate increases, we would typically build an escalator into our revenue, and it's anywhere from 4% to 6%, depending on what the actual rate increase is. This year, because we know we are asking for water conservation measures, we did not factor that in at all, and we just factored in a slight increase due to the penalties, knowing that also part of the penalties that are being that will be collected will also go to offset decreasing revenues.
Well, I think my question should have been more clear. Do the projected revenues reflect the decrease in water use and the corresponding decrease in billing?
Yeah, the short answer is yes. Yes, they do, because we know the rates are going to go up in November. However, we are expecting that the rate, the water use is actually going to go down. So we factor that into our projections, but we can certainly look at it. Look at it in more detail and knowing that on a month-by-month basis, we're going to get a better idea of where we're at.
Now, and we're we're looking for, as I understand, it's something approximately 30% in terms of overall conservation. So I mean, I know we have different rates for residential customers and commercial customers, so I don't know what that would mean in terms of a net aggregate reduction in revenue, but it it does seem like it would be significant. And then if that's reflected in the figures we had on the screen, and the increase from the previous year is drawn from a projected penalties, that suggests to me that the penalty figure that you're using is big. So I've just I'm having a hard time sort of mentally subtracting for what I would assume to be a fairly modest penalty provision and 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 then you know, see a significant decrease reflecting the phase two. So so at some point, I would like to see a breakdown for sure. Thank you.
Yes, yes, we can definitely do that, and it's something other to something else to remember, too, when the rates go up. Water use, the consumption charge, is the same for every user. It's the base fees for water for water that's a little bit different because it's based off of meter size. And so when the rates go up in November, it not only affects your consumption rate, but also the base rate. And the base rates are not affected by water use, just the consumption. So there's a balance, but we will definitely refine the numbers and provide a breakdown. We can. We can do that.
Thank you. I'm seeing Councilmember Hall.
Thank you. Dr. Mitz, I was just curious on the salary and benefit expenses. Do these estimates include forecast to staff up the existing, I guess, missing positions or frozen positions, particularly at the at the plant?
Yes. So what the salary benefits projections do is it assumes that we'll keep, you know, it assumes that we will be we're continuing to recruit for those positions. And I believe we and I can ask Mandy Kellogg if she remembers offhand what it is. I believe we showed it was three months using OTS, and then after that three-month mark, hopefully, we'd have the people. And we did how we budget for open positions. We always budget at top staff plus full benefits, so there's not any shocks that when we do hire, you know, whoever we hire in the position. So we overbudget when it comes to vacant positions. So I hope that answers your question.
It does. Thank you.
Thank you, and want to see if there are any other questions from council before we continue into the next step here. And seeing none, I'll pass it back to Dr. Mitz.
Great, thank you. And from the slide up, I did I I had my my fingers were not functioning properly, so it is 4.6 million here for the landing net position. So next, we will move on to the wastewater. And so again, same with water, and we will definitely work on refining and getting the breakdown on the numbers. For the wastewater revenues, we did keep it the same, knowing that the wastewater rates will be going up in November. However, it's a one-to-one ratio for the consumption side for all non-residential customers. And again, the non-residential customers, this is the differentiation, depending on what type of industry it is, is what type of wastewater consumption rate there is, because we know that different industries and different types of wastewater that goes through, whether it has grease in it or whether it comes from, you know, something other than normal household use, it does require more processing on our plants, which does cost more money. So we did keep this even right now, taking that into consideration. But again, same with the water, we'll work on further refining those, and then before we adopt the final budget, we'll actually have a more comprehensive breakdown for you. For the wastewater expenses, you will see again the fiscal year 1920 actuals, year '21 estimated, and your fiscal year '22 draft has the same patterns on this as on the water side, where you see that the capital expenses have decreased due to one-time purchases for operational capital needs. The transfers, we have not put into place. Again, we do that at the very at the very last last minute, so then it gets pushed over to the water CIP to be able to help cash fund some of those projects. And then the increase in salary benefits is due to the normal salary increases, as well as we have one vacancy in the wastewater treatment plant, where we currently have a consultant onboard to help fill that position because of the requirements of the certification requirements. So when we look at our overall draft wastewater fund balance, again, we show our ending fund balance position at 4.1 million, our estimated revenues at 3.4, estimated expenses of just short of 3 million, showing our net position is at 4.4, almost 4.5 million, which is 113%. And again, this does include the 1.15 million settlement that has not yet been transferred over to the wastewater CIP. Once it does is transferred over, we're expecting the net position to be within about 72%. And again, it does not include any CIP transfers. So for that on the wastewater side, before we move on to CIP, I will open it up for any questions or comments or feedback.
Are there any questions from council here at this point? I had a question seeing Mr. Church and Mr. Wanger on. I just want to check in on the any vacant positions. Do we feel that we've got the coverage through an interim solution through one of our consultant firms? I just want to get some sense of whether we're feeling that we've got the coverage until we look more deeply at these positions.
Do you want to? Good morning. Good morning. Yes, sir. Currently, both plants, we've filled in staff with OTS operators, and we are operating at capacity with our personnel.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure we've got the coverage while we're looking at our more mid or long-term solutions. So thank you.
Yes, sir.
With that, any other questions from council? I'm seeing city manager.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. With respect to the questions about incorporating water conservation into the revenues, I think it's going to be important for us to model a couple of different scenarios that may materially affect these revenues, and that would be assumptions of a Phase II emergency through, let's say, the mid-October range, when the rainy season would begin. And then also a scenario that would take us in extend Phase II all the way through the remainder of the fiscal year. So the questions related to, I think specifically, for example, the 10% reduction that we've asked our business that the code has asked our businesses to conserve along with the limited water allocations per person. We know that not everyone will, and the challenge here is we haven't been through this, but if we model what the code requires, my anticipation is that the revenues would be potentially substantially less, particularly if this extends through the full fiscal year. So I think we, from a staff perspective, we're going to need to bring forward a couple of assumptions that model both, you know, a scenario that takes us through the beginning of the rainy season, and we keep our fingers crossed it rains a lot, and we're able to move out of that. But we also need to model one that assumes a very dry year and see what that impact is on the revenues through the full year.
One one other question I have in terms of procurement of outside waters, if you know, if we have the opportunity that comes up, and we're looking for outside waters to to bring in, are we nimble enough in our finances to be able to to move on opportunities as they come up? And then how is that budgeted in?
It's not budgeted in at the moment, but I think, given our fund balance, we're nimble enough to adjust. I'll ask the finance director to weigh on that, and it's unclear at the moment whether we are able to purchase additional any of the additional 200 acre feet from the city of Napa. So that is a conversations that that is maturing right now. We're expecting to hear back again from the city here, city of Napa here in the next week or two. But it does appear likely that we have the ability to purchase some of the 200 acre feet. We're just not clear on exactly how much right now.
Thank you, and I'm seeing Councilmember Chateau.
Thank you. Mine's just a clarifying question, Dr. Mitz. With that 113% figure you just showed on the last slide, what is that? Is that extra funds over the 100% that we can use for other things?
Well, part of it is is the net position. So basically, what we do is we you look at what your ending fund balances, and you divide that by the total expenses. And so there are similar to the general fund where we have a general fund is a 30% reserve level. We also have reserve levels that have been established for both the water and wastewater funds. And so that is that is excess, but then we also know that we will need to utilize some of that to potentially cash fund some of the projects. And we also have to make sure that we maintain what the current levels are, and I would have to look to see what the policy is. Offhand, I don't remember what it is, because what water, I want to say one of them is six months, and one of them is nine months cash. And so when you're at 100%, that is one year's worth of cash. That's what the equivalent is.
Okay, thank you. That's what I wanted to hear, the projects, the capital projects for the extra. Thank you.
Thank you. I saw Councilmember Hardy's hand up and then go down. Any input at this?
Dr. Mitz answered my question before I asked it.
Very good. Okay, we'll go back and pass it back to you, Dr. Mitz.
Great. Thank you very much, and thank you for the feedback and the questions. I do appreciate it. Next, I am actually going to turn it over to John Wanger, and he will start reviewing the CIP projects. So I will be sharing my screen, and then there might be other additional.
Excuse me, if we're moving on to the CIP, let me open it up for public comment on this item. Excuse me, if we're moving on to the CIP, let me open it up for public comment on this item. And I'll look to our, our city clerk Cindy to see if we have public comment at this point.
There is no public comment.
Okay, very good. So with that, I'll move back to, bring it back to the council. We'll move on to our next item. Looking at the CIP, my, my iPad just dropped out here. So the item number, could somebody refresh me on the item number, please?
5.2.
5.2. We will move on to 5.2. My iPad is booting up here and we, I'll pass it back to Mr. Wanger.
Actually, actually, quick clarification. This is still 5.1. 5.1 included the, the budget and the CIP. 5.2 will be restricted to just street. So we are still on 5.1 for a point of clarification.
Thank you. My, and my, my computer iPad is coming back on. I'll be back up to speed very briefly. So please continue.
Perfect. And with that, I'm going to pass it over to, to John.
Thank you, Dr. Metz. If you can put up the CIP information, that would be great. Good morning, council members. Just, this is going to be either a brief or a lengthy discussion of the CIP, depending upon how much detail the council would like to go into. But we have approximately 46 projects that we are working on. And in fiscal year 22, we're projecting that 16 of those, which we consider over $200,000 significant, will be moving forward and working on. There's a total of 58 million in water and wastewater projects as well as civic and street projects. And this morning, I believe we are just going over the water and wastewater. Is that correct with your slides, Dr. Metz? You can go to the next one. So we are covering everything. Okay. So my question.
I couldn't find my unmute button.
No worries, no worries. So the question, Mr. Mayor and council members is, how much detail would you like me to go into each project? And we want to just touch on them and ask questions with some of them? Or do you want an explanation of each one?
My, my thought is if, and I'm certainly open to council input as well. But if you touch on each one with just a bit of detail, and then we can see if there are specific questions from the council. So if you give us a little overview of each and keep moving and I'll, I'll watch for hands. If that sounds acceptable to the council, then please let me know if there's another approach.
Okay.
Okay. I think that looks good. Thank you.
With that, we'll start at the top. C1883 ADA Transition Plan Facilities. This is kind of an ongoing project to address our ADA transition plan and looking to each year increase compliance with anything from pedestrian ramps to sidewalks. So we have a, we have an ongoing annual expenditure for that. For C1903, it's retrofitting the existing park light fixtures and upgrades to the electrical equipment. Part of this is currently done and, and I will say that I am going to tag team a little bit with Mr. Church this morning. Clayton, if there are.
If I may interrupt, I see Councilmember Hall with a hand up. I just want to see if he's looking for a clarification.
Thank you. John, one quick question. Total estimated project cost, is that from this day forward out in time? Or is this, for instance, is the, for the first project here, the, sorry, let me move this, the ADA transition, the 117 in fiscal year 22. The other, you know, 300,000, three, three and a quarter or so, has that already been spent or is that going to be spent in, in years after 22?
I, I believe, and, and Dr. Metz can confirm this, the way she has put together these numbers, but I believe that's for future years as well.
Okay.
That is, that is correct. So there are, and I will share, I'm trying to move something else over. Did my screen just change where you can see something else?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Let me make it a little bigger. Yeah. So when you look at the detail for the draft CIP that's in the back, you'll see over here on the, the far left column, it will say total year to date. So these are all the expenses for that particular project that had been spent through 51121. So that's when we started building the new draft CIP. Here you'll see any additional costs in fiscal year 2122 and as well as any subsequent years. And then in the far right, it will show you what the total project cost is. And so when on this list here, you'll see what we're anticipating, we're going to spend in fiscal year 22. And then here you'll see your total estimated project cost. So that will include any project costs that have already been spent as well as what's programmed in other future years. And so we wanted to be able to give you a full picture of what the actual project costs are. For instance, when we get over to the street CIP, you'll see like for our 1979, what's already been spent, some of that is prior construction, some of it is prior design. Then you take the current construction and then that will give you the total project cost. So I hope that helps clarify.
It does. Thank you.
Thank you. So, so we'll go back to Mr. Wanger.
Clayton, is there anything that I missed on the Crane Park lighting improvements that you wanted to mention?
No, sir.
Okay. Moving on to C20-02, repainting the fire station. That is pretty self-explanatory. It's just a repainting of that. Baldwin Park Fence and Pathway Repairs, C2004. This is for removing and replacing fences as needed. And this has been an ongoing project. As residents replace fences, the city provides a 50% cost sharing on that. Moving on to C2006, the emergency backup power. This is for the purchase and installation of emergency generator power to the library, the Droll No Pump Station, the Stonebridge Wells and Flood Control Project Site. And this one is currently being worked on. And I believe Clayton, and you can confirm this, some of this work is going on right now. And we are, I think, I believe we have ordered the generators already. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. At the flood project and the Stonebridge well site, they're coordinating the cranes to set the generators. And then we're working out permitting for the library site currently.
And Mr. Wanger, is there, is there any FEMA support on these or grant support on these generators?
Yes, there are through hazard, the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, I believe we have. And I think that shows in the detail on each particular CIP item. Dr. Metz has listed the various funding sources and you can see, thank you for that, April. You can see the detail on that, that the vast majority of expenses in this is covered through the HMGP funds.
Great. And if I could just jump in for a minute, this is a good example of one of the recommendations that came out of the 2017 fires and our after-action report identified the value and the need for additional generators so that our staff didn't have to rent them at times of emergency, wire them in, then wire them in in the middle of the night, for example. And, and these investments will help us reduce costs in the future.
Mark, sorry, can you comment on why the library is on this list?
It's a building that for us could provide some, an opportunity to have a cooling center in the future. It's, we don't have a great facility for that right now. We saw the library as a building that could benefit from a generator as well. And for a variety of reasons. And there, and there was grant money available coming out of the fires as well as some PSPS resources recently that were made available. And the city's been successful at receiving grants from both granting, granting enterprises.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Wanger?
Great. I was waiting for April to take that down, but we have that. Moving on to the C2101, Clayton, I'm actually going to ask you to address that one. It's the emergency PSPS emergency backup power.
And which sites are we talking, John? I thought we just went over that one.
It's, it's a combination of a couple of different sites, if I'm not mistaken. It's the, the Lewis Stralla Water Treatment Plant and it's primarily, that's primarily for that one. It's kind of a combination of the prior project and this project covers all of those sites.
Yeah, we, we lost that generator during the fires and they're currently, it's being inspected. And there's a, there's a temporary one onsite and it's being designed in spec for the permanent replacement of the genset at Lewis Stralla.
Perfect. You can take that down, April. All right. Moving on to C2201, Millie Park Drainage Site Survey, New Turf and Upgrade. This is an upgrade to the irrigation system that is needed. There was an underground irrigation system there that is going to be replaced with aerial irrigation system, if I'm not mistaken. Now that is programmed for future fiscal year. So that's, that's not in this current year. C2202 Replacement of Playground Equipment and Fence at Crane Park. Again, that's, that's somewhat self-explanatory and we're projecting that to take place during fiscal year 22. If you can go to the next slide, April. All right. Moving into some of the street projects, we are going to cover.
If I could just interrupt, I apologize that slipped past on the, on the upgrades to the park play equipment at Crane. Are there any opportunities for things like grants for park support or, or something that could help support something like that? And then a question too is, are there some perhaps interim measures that can be taken to, to make sure that things are usable until we get to the, or, or, you know, fully usable till we get to the more large-scale renovation?
I can speak to the, I can speak to the grants portion of this and Mandy can fill in any details on it as well. We currently have a Prop 68 grant for this, for this project. Total project cost is estimated to be 250,000. And out of that amount, 170,000 is going to be paid for from the Prop 68 grant. And then the remaining funds on this, this is one of the projects that was also taken before the Parks and Rec Commission and endorsed by the Parks and Rec Commission to utilize park impact fees to pay for the difference. So I hope that answers your question.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay. If you can move on to the next slide, April. All right. For the downtown project, this is, this is one of the major projects that we have going on. And we are, we have gotten updated costs from the consultant that was doing this and they exceeded prior costs. I will tell you that as recent as yesterday afternoon, I was on the phone with NVTA looking to see whether there were some available additional funds, which they are checking into. I had hoped to have that information this morning, but we are looking at about a million dollar increase. We're currently going through the estimate that the consultant has provided to us and seeing if we can refine some of those costs. But that project in particular is 100% ready to go. We've got our environmental clearances through Caltrans. And we were, or we are in the process of filing the final paperwork to allow us to move to the construction phase. If we are able to get that, within six months of when we get that authorization, we will be looking at, at bidding that project and looking at actual construction occurring after the holidays, starting in that project.
Thank you. And I saw Councilmember Hall, then Councilmember Chateau.
I'm okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Chateau.
Hi, thank you. Could you explain a little bit about what the million dollar increase is about? Is that construction costs, building materials? What changed?
So a few, a few things changed on that project. Number one, there has been an increase in construction costs, particularly concrete. It has really gone up in the last year or two. But the other thing that was noted is, I, I can't speak to how it was determined, but there was a lower dollar amount allocated for construction management and inspection on that project. And we increased that to reflect what we believe is going to have to be needed during the construction to, to walk this through. And that was an increase in itself of, if I'm not mistaken, that was an increase of almost $600,000. So it's going to take a pretty robust effort to make sure that things are addressed and property owners are listened to and, and taken care of. So those are, those are primarily the two reasons.
Thank you.
Thank you. And seeing Vice Mayor Doring.
Thank you. Maybe this question is for the city manager. I just was, obviously this project is continued upon getting cooperation and movement from property owners to install and upgrade their sewer laterals. And I'm wanting to have an update in terms of the status because obviously that, that affects the schedule.
Right. So I'm going to ask our interim public works director, sorry, interim city engineer to speak to a meeting that they had this past Thursday. And I do anticipate we, we have a council-approved grant program that allows for a zero-interest loan for five years, up to five years. That, that loan expires at the end of July. I do think it's foreseeable that it will be helpful for us to extend that for a few months to allow for projects to be completed. And with that, let me turn it over to our interim city engineer for an update on the most recent meeting.
Thank you. Last Thursday, we did hold a virtual meeting. Notices were sent to all the property owners, downtown properties. We had about a half a dozen people on the call. Three of them represented the same property. It was a little bit disappointing that there weren't more property owners participating in it, but it was a good meeting. We were able to hear a lot of the concerns that they had. Were able to lay out the timelines associated with the project. We also talked about sewer lateral repairs and, and timing for those. And we looked at, talked about a few options, which I'm in the process of pursuing. Having to talk to both the city manager and the city attorney to see if there's issues with different approaches. But all in all, those folks that did participate, very, very good input. And we are, we're actually pursuing some very minor changes to street tree placement such that they are not going to go over the top of sewer laterals. And I'll, I'll be working with the consultant in the coming weeks to see if we can get that squared away.
The other, the other information I would add is through a series of these types of meetings, it's become clear that bundling the projects among property owners will be advantageous, both from a construction standpoint, having it all done at the same time by the same contractor, and also hopefully from a cost economy of scale perspective. So there, there is a property owner, there are a number, number of property owners that have expressed a willingness to work together. So a bit of this is the coordination among all of them. And they have raised some issues related to process that the interim city engineer has referred to. This is the, the follow-up conversation that we intend to have with our city attorney.
Thank you. I'm seeing Councilmember Hall.
Thank you. And thank you, John. Mark, I was just wondering if you, this will be obviously a very significant effort right downtown. And if you need assistance from the council in helping to pull together more of the downtown merchants, please reach out to, to us to help get that done. I think also, Mark, to your point, I like the idea, maybe this is both, both of your ideas of looking at sort of phasing this in bundles as you go. And it would be great to see what that plan looks like over time and how that gets calendared out as we get further into this.
Right. And I'll, I'll certainly take the, the note in terms of working with council members that they have contacts that. with council members that may have contacts that we may have trouble communicating with, but in addition to that, I think our our staff, both Mr. Church and Mr. Wanger can comment on on this, but there are two different types of projects. Some will be a more of a sleeve type project, which is less intrusive and others will be opening up the sidewalk and really physically removing pipe that way, depending on the degree of damage that we've seen with videos. So I believe that also perhaps leads to two different types of contractors. So bundling one group with one contractor, bundling another with others that are willing to do the work is something that is anticipated. And I don't know if Mr. Church or Mr. Wanger would like to expand on my comments.
I think you did an outstanding job in describing that, Mr. Presswitch, and I'll give you the the Engineer for the Day Award on that.
Okay, so no other questions there? We'll move, we'll keep moving. And I do have a question on the next two items, but if you run through those first, I'll just jump in after.
Sure. Moving on to R nineteen oh three, this project is providing some bank repairs that were caused during the twenty sixteen seventeen storms. And it was identified in the Flight Control Project Post-Construction Monitoring and Reporting. And that this project will actually be done using Flight Control Project Adaptive Management Program. And moving on to actually the next one, which is, which is somewhat related. The second one, which is R nineteen oh four, is actually removal of sediment that's built up in Sulfur Creek beneath the bridge at the Valley View and at City and Creek section in front of the City Public Works Corporation Yard on Charter Oak.
My, my questions on those, and I'm glad to hear our communication continuing with the flood board on it. I'm just in looking at the the level, level of sediment, in your opinion, is is twenty twenty four suitable a few years out? Or if there's a way to expedite that process through the flood board? If if there's already a conversation about how this process lays out and how we're going to pay for it? Perhaps, I don't know if that payment comes through the city and the county flood. But without wanting to disrupt a process that may already be in place, is there any thought to seeing about accelerating the timeframe of when the sediment removal could happen?
I, I agree with you that sooner would be better than later, for sure. Part of this has to do with available funding, but as staff, we can certainly look into seeing if there's a way we can, we can bump that up.
And and my thought too is in in knowing about staff capacity, not wanting to overwhelm our staff, you know, is this a, an opportunity for an outside consulting firm to come in and do, do some work if our staff capacity is not there for something?
Yes.
And I'm seeing a city manager and then Councilmember Hardy.
I want to invite Mr. Church to address the the Sulfur Creek area because we did do some work about a year ago in that area. And obviously, this is a type of continuing work that we have to do near the South Crane essentially bridge in that area. There are, there are some private properties nearby that would also benefit from erosion control, but perhaps just some context could be helpful here from Clayton.
Yes, sir. So it was last summer, we removed sediment around the abutments of the the bridge there on South Crane. And it's a part of our our RMA with Fish and Game, our routine maintenance agreement and we were meeting with them here in the near future to maybe expand the footprint of what we did the year prior, remove a little bit more sediment to gain us some more years on pressure there at the abutments of the bridge. And there'll be more to come once we can meet with, once we have that meeting set with them, but we do plan on doing that type of work again this summer.
That's great. That's helpful to hear that we're, we're bringing in measures to to release pressure as we go. So that's, that's good to hear. Thank you. And I'm seeing Councilmember Hardy.
Thank you. Well, this is really just a point of information, but I suppose a question as well. It, I know that historically, the diversion of Sulfur Creek at Main Street significantly changed how the creek deposits gravel since now all the gravel deposition has to occur on the west side of Main Street. Creek doesn't have as much room in which to deposit gravel and Sulfur Creek carries a huge volume of gravel, especially in wet winters. At some point, I couldn't provide you the air from memory. But there was team of engineers led, interestingly enough, by someone from Cambridge University that did modeling on the morphology of the creek and and how gravel's deposited. I recall from a conversation with Erica that Public Works has a copy of the study. But more to the point, I believe the modeling calculated roughly how much gravel one would expect to need to remove in order to maintain the level in the creek sort of at a constant level, or to put it differently, how much gravel you've got to remove in order to avoid effectively raising the floodplain for that reach of the creek. So I'm just asking Mr. Wanger to flag this so that at some point down the road and hopefully before too long, we can get some idea as to whether or not enough gravel is being removed from the creek to keep the floodplain within its current confines or whether we are getting behind. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
So noted and thank you. I'm making notes as we go through these if if there are issues that I need to follow up on, so I appreciate that.
Okay, if there any, no more questions here on that aspect, if you want to proceed, we'll just keep going.
Yes, sir. Part of this, we're starting to get into projects that are going to be addressed by the next item, but I can briefly touch on on these. Our nineteen oh five, actually, the council heard on Tuesday night, we made some decisions on that and we're moving forward with the design based on council's direction. So that should be moving forward. It should be noted that this is design only. Once we have the the plans finished, then we will be able to bring some costs with respect to construction. Silverado Trail Guard Rail Replacement, our nineteen oh seven.
I'm sorry, Mr. Wanger, I'm seeing our Vice Mayor Doring.
I'm sorry.
Just, just a brief question. I apologize. Do you anticipate that the design costs may have to increase a little bit, given the community's interest in traffic calming measures to have the, the the contractor, the consultant, look at that a little bit more or 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 do, is it too early to tell?
It's slightly too early to tell, but I can say that in follow-up to the council meeting on Tuesday night, I have already reached out to the design consultant and mentioned the concerns for traffic calming and I have told them that as part of their design, we're going to have to consider various traffic calming devices. They indicated that they would definitely start looking into it. I didn't get the impression that it's going to need significant engineering or design. So I I don't anticipate anything significant. I think we're, we may be able to do that within the within the contract limits right now, but but we will see.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our nineteen oh seven Replacement of the Guard Rail and Pavement Markings and Stripings on Silverado Trail within the city limits. This is a project that's actually a hundred percent funded through federal funds. It's the HSIP program that Caltrans has. And we are anticipating getting authorization to do that project prior to the end of the year, which means it will most likely be a spring of twenty two project. Our nineteen seventy nine, that's part of a two-year project. The first year has already been constructed. The second year, we'll go into some details on that in the next item, but this is part of spending measure T monies. We're estimating that this year, this year's project, which we will hopefully put out to bid very shortly here, should have costs of around one point two, maybe slightly under one point two million dollars. And that one, again, it's, it's currently a shovel-ready project and once we receive guidance from the council, that one will go out to bid and hopefully be constructed towards the middle to end of summer.
I'm seeing Councilmember Hall.
Thank you. John, is this related to the presentation you gave the other night at the council meeting where we were looking at basically an inventory of our, our road surfaces and some indication of required spend levels for years ahead?
It was, it was covered only from the extent that the streets that are in the the R nineteen seventy nine second year list that we're looking at doing. I would, I believe about eighty or ninety percent of the streets that were in that project are on the list, the five-year list that was mentioned, that came out of the Payment Management Program. So from that context, yes, it was covered. However, we will get into a little bit more in the second item in the agenda
Okay.
with respect to overall spending and conditions.
Okay, I'll wait for that. Thank you.
Okay. All right, moving on to our, the Silverado Trail project. This project is a project that we typically try to coordinate with the county anytime we end up having work on the Silverado Trail. We originally thought it was going to take place sooner, but in checking with the county, what ends up happening is they have a particular paving program and we contribute our fair share, which is shown on here, but based on information we got from the county, that's projected to be in fiscal year twenty four. And April, if you can move on to the next slide. Okay. Our twenty oh two, which is the Mel Street project. As you, as you know, this is part of the overall master plan drainage as well as it's being done in conjunction with the Farmstead project. This particular project, similar to the downtown project, we recently received estimates from the design engineer that were significantly higher than what was originally projected by them. We're in the process of finding out why. I know part of it is because of, again, of concrete prices. Most of the, if not all of the storm rain piping that they're proposing on using with this is concrete pipe. So those expenses went up, but we are trying to look into what drove the costs up in that as well. We did increase the, as far as the construction management and inspection costs on this project, but again, we, we were a little bit taken aback by the cost estimate on this, but that project is moving forward. As the council knows, there were some items with respect to acquiring easements that we're currently in process of, and then once those are obtained, the project will be moving forward. Hopefully, all of the, the agency permits between Fish and Game and US Army Corps of Engineer are going to be obtained in August, according to the consultant, which means that this would be a late summer, early fall project.
I wanted to ask if there's any dialogue about looking for funding with, since this does relate to both our watershed and our river. If there's a conversation with the Flood Control Board or with the with the WIC, the Watershed Information and Conservation Council or the Resource Conservation District to see if perhaps there's some partnership on managing this water as, you know, some certainly does originate in town, but also, you know, water comes off that that western watershed through our city and to the river. I'm just wondering if there's some dialogue that might be able to help defray some cost.
We can certainly pursue that. That's a great idea and I've made note of that, so we will, we will pursue that and see if any funding is available from those sources.
Thank you. And I'm seeing Councilmember Hall.
Thank you. John, just one other question regarding the cost of concrete. Is there are the designers looking at using other products for this pipe? I know, I think the spec is for a sixty inch pipe by the time it gets to the river.
Yes.
There are other sorts of plastics, PE PVC, et cetera, that might be cheaper to go. And is this that long of a length? I think it's only about five hundred feet, four hundred and fifty feet, something like that, if I recall.
It's, it's, I believe it's over a thousand feet, I think. I have to go back and look at their estimate, but we did have that discussion and we are looking into it. Part of the problem is because of the size of the pipe and and where we have to connect and drain. The pipe is is very shallow. And the problem is if the road goes over the top of it and you get a lot of loading from trucks, you have to take that into account, but there's there's other alternatives and those are the things that we're exploring with, with the consultant right now to see if we can bring it in a little, little less.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Mr. Presswitch?
Just want to highlight this one because the recent cost estimate was more than four million dollars higher than the prior estimate that was that the city was using in fall of twenty twenty. So this is a number that's grown substantially since last fall. And as a result, it presents a, a significant funding challenge for the city near term to deliver this project. So the current unfunded funding gap right now is four point six million dollars. This is a a serious challenge for the city to to overcome. And it's, it's, it's going to be and is now a new issue that our staff is going to have to identify other alternatives or options for financing this project, because this is obviously material to the delivery of the Farmstead project. However, there is a, a very significant funding gap. And I just want to make sure that that does not go unnoticed.
Thank you. Mr. Wanger?
All right, moving on to the next project, R twenty one oh two Pratt and Elmhurst Crosswalks. This is a pedestrian safety and pedestrian improvement project. We're going to be replacing the curb ramps as well as the markings and signage. Plus, we're going to be installing rap, rectangular rapid flashing beacons, which are RFBs. At one of them, we're actually looking at exploring potentially installing those at both locations for pedestrian safety. So this one is currently just about ready to go out to bid. We've received Caltrans Approach Amendment Approval, so this one will be moving forward.
That, that's, that's really terrific to hear. You know, one of the things we hear all around town is, is getting pedestrians and bicyclists safely across our busy streets. So seeing this moving forward is is terrific. And I don't know if if there's any, we know also the safe routes to school that were being discussed on Madrona and Spring, and my understanding is that information should be coming back at a fairly soon. Is that correct?
I believe that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Similar to R twenty one oh two, R twenty one oh four, same thing, same kind of thing. We're looking at a pedestrian safety project on College Avenue right at Pope Street and College. We're looking at installing new ADA compliant curb ramps as well as crossings, and we're also looking at installing RFB at this location as well for added enhancement for pedestrian safety.
The RFB being the flashing beacon?
Yes, it's, it stands for rectangular rapid flashing beacon. So it's So it's the, it's the sign that has, they actually are, they look like strobe lights, very bright yellow strobe lights that are activated by pedestrians crossing the street. And it most definitely gets vehicles to pay attention to what's going on, so.
Very good. Thank you.
The next series of four projects are all of the projected street pavement restoration projects. And these will be discussed a little bit more in detail. We have a list of five years' worth of streets in the next council item that we're going to cover. We have estimated, based on budgetary numbers from both Measure T as well as gas tax. We had, we had put in a budget in the overall payment management program of expending approximately eight hundred thousand dollars a year in the actual construction. And then on top of that, design and construction management and inspection costs. That would bring the total to somewhere close to overall spending a million to a million two each year, as shown in this, in this particular line item for each one of these. And I know there are some questions whether we could potentially look at either including more streets or potentially more funding. And we can either talk about that here or at the next item, either, either one. If you can move on to the next sheet. Okay, with respect to water. Give me one second here. There we go. So there's a series of projects that are with Bell Canyon and you're going to see, for instance, W thirty-five, W eighty-five, W ninety-one, W one oh-eight, W one oh-nine. There are a number of projects that we have at the Bell Canyon site. Several of those, some of those are looking at doing anything from some sediment removal to replacing a valve at the downstream end of the dam to installing monitors within the creek to be able to better monitor inflow, which will give us the ability to better pace release of waters that have to stay in the creek. As well as the Bell Canyon intake tower replacement. That structure is over forty years old and we currently are talking with state folks and the Division of Dam Safety folks to get that approved. And we are looking at, I believe, hazard mitigation grant monies for much of that expense. So that, that actually covers a myriad of projects, which is W thirty-five, W eighty-five, W ninety-one, W one oh-eight and W one oh-nine. So on those, are there questions?
I'm seeing Vice Mayor Doring.
Maybe my question is a little bit premature, but it does touch on this area. As I understand it, the city has committed itself to doing a fair amount of infrastructure improvement in, in a number of different settlement agreements. We also have obligations by regulatory mandate, probably obligations by development agreements. It would be very helpful for me for the city to sort of document that, sort of give a status of each one of those obligations that we have brought upon ourselves through settlement agreements. You know, especially concerned about sewer and stormwater pipe intrusion, water audit, Bell Canyon, you touched upon Bell Canyon. I think that's as a result of, of litigation and the settlement. I think it's been a while since we've had a sort of a, a report out on each one of those issues and where we are in terms of our obligations. And so that would be very helpful, I think, for the city particularly. I'd like to look at that at some point. Kind of been asking for that for some time and still don't feel like I have a handle on it. So that would be important to do.
Duly noted, and I will work with the city manager to get that, see if we can get that list compiled.
And, and one question I just want to ask as well as with our, you know, water situation that, that really became much clearer as we got through the winter-spring that the circumstances were in. Has that changed prioritization on any of these projects? Or are we looking at a, a sort of a, a way of going through this that, that we feel is consistent with the current situation?
Um, I can tell you that some of them, for instance, W ninety-one, as far as creek inflow, we're working on that right now and we're trying to get that moving. And that does have to do with litigation and, and what we've promised in the settlement agreements. But I will tell you that W thirty-five, W eighty-five, W one oh-eight and W one oh-nine. We are currently at a sixty-five percent design stage and that got submitted to Division of Dam Safety, which has had those plans for quite a while. We are waiting to finalize those plans until we get the comments back from them. I did have a conversation with a representative from the, the Division of Dam Safety about three weeks ago. He was asking what our proposed schedule was and I said ASAP because the unfortunate part is we are at historic lows as far as elevations in the Bell Canyon reservoir right now. The, the only silver lining to having water that low is it makes some of these projects a little bit easier. And so we were hoping to be able to move those four, but many of those are actually waiting on comments back from D S O D. So we are, we are hopeful that we can get some of this work done while the reservoir is low. But again, that's going to depend somewhat on the state.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Does, does that include potential sediment removal?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, W eighty. This is, and Clayton, I may need your help on this one as well, but it's a shared facility between Salina, Napa and Kalistoga, being the Dwyer Road Booster Pump Station. And this project is kind of a shared project between all three. I believe that this one, they have applied for hazard mitigation grant monies through this. But Clayton, can you provide a little bit more input on this one?
I'm seeing Mark as well, city manager with a hand up.
I can assist as well. The, the city of Napa has applied for a hazard mitigation grant that would cover seventy-five percent of the project cost. And we have a proportionate share. And this, this is a project that when complete will, and Clayton can speak to, speak more to this, significantly improve the pressure for us and allow for greater flows into our, our system.
Yes, sir. Based on what source Napa is drawing from, it's determined the inlet pressure. This will give us more of a balance inlet pressure to run that site, to run R P S Rutherford Pump Station more efficiently.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to Project W eighty-six. The Spring Mountain Pressure Zone Improvements. This is to upgrade and integrate the homes in the Elmhurst Water Delivery System. We're anticipating this one to occur in FY twenty-two. We've already touched on W ninety-one, W one oh-one. This is actually the rehabilitation of the tank and it's primarily has to do with repainting. And I believe it's both the inside and exterior of that tank. That tank is in, is in dire need of some repairs. We didn't have a lot of damage from the fire, but there were some minor damage that we would like to have that recoded in this next year. W one oh-six, pump station upgrades. We're looking at upgrading the existing pump stations with backup power in the event of any power outage. And W one ten, because we've already talked about W one oh-nine. The W one ten is, I believe this has to do with, part of it is the electrical equipment upgrade. And Clayton, is this, is this the Aqua Sierra work? Just to double check.
No, the Aqua Sierra work is the, the replacement of some old pumps.
It's the electrical, yeah, okay.
Yes.
Can you, can you touch on this project then? Because you're more familiar with it than I am.
Uh, it's an upgrade to, to all the existing infrastructure in that site. From the V F Ds to P L Cs, transducers, balance of the pressure moving through the site and, and limited the pressure coming from the existing system via the clay valve, existing clay valve in there.
And I don't believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, this, this doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to increase pumping through the Napa line. Is that correct?
No, sir, but this was a combination of the Aqua Sierra work and then this works will be able to accomplish redundancy in that pumping station with two pumps.
Correct. Okay. Uh, any questions on that?
Are these the last of the water? I'm sorry, let me scroll down here. Are there more coming on the?
There is a few, a few more.
Okay, great. And then I'll, I'll, I've got a comment on in general afterwards.
Okay. One second here. Okay, moving to W eighteen, one eleven. This is, this is just a condition assessment to identify short and long-term needs of the Lou Estrela Water Treatment Plant. We're hoping to accomplish that in, in twenty twenty-two. W eighteen dash one thirteen is applying power and instrumentation upgrades to integrate the city's water pump stations into a skated control system. W one eighteen dash one fifteen. Again, this is at the Rutherford Pump Station and we're looking at between the Dwyer Pump Station, Rutherford Pump Station to be able to remove a restriction that reduces the amount of water being pumped to the city. And we're hoping that this project can remove the restrictions in order to maximize the delivery of water. This one is forecasted for, let's see, I'm sorry, for this next year. And I know we have to work cooperatively with Napa on this one. Is that correct, Clayton, or is this bars alone?
Uh, we'd work concurrently with Napa, just if we weren't moving water from that site and they were going to be supplying it to us. That'd be, it's, it's about where the, the, when we did the pressure readings years ago. It's somewhere near where the train tracks cross Highway twenty-nine down by Whitehall Lane.
Thank you. W eighteen dash one eighteen. This is a annual project that we're looking at replacing water mains and we're, we're shooting to do one project a year. We actually have a current project that is a hundred percent designed, which is the W twenty-one oh-one, the Kearney and Andrea Water Main Replacement Project. So we are looking at, it's an annual, annual replacement program to upgrade our infrastructure. W eighteen dash one twenty. The forensic surface monitoring and assessment. We're looking at, this is based on a new requirement from the Division of Dam Safety as a result of what happened in twenty seventeen to the Orville Dam. So this is a mandate from, again, from the state. And then W twenty dash oh-one, there have been some repairs made at the spillway base. And we're actually looking at doing a little bit more on that. Clayton, I don't know whether you want to describe what has been done so far on this, on this particular one.
Maintenance at best, we've keyed in a lot of the areas that it started to erode with, with the big rip route, two tonners down to smaller size.
And then the last water project, which I believe is twenty-one oh-one, I already touched on that, but this is actually a replacement of a four-inch water main in Kearney between Hillview Place and Adam Street, as well as the main on Andrea from Kearney to Oak Avenue.
Thank you. Any questions from council here? Seeing none. So one point I had a note from the, the earlier part of the, the item on water, but I think it's relevant here too, is that we see some cross-jurisdictional issues. I'm wondering if there's, you know, some value in a dialogue about working cross-jurisdictionally more in terms of efficiencies of scale and economy with our water resources. Lafco last year put out a, a report with, with a recommendation of considering moving to a county-wide system. I'm just wondering if, as we talk about how we pay for what we do and if there are cross-jurisdictional opportunities, then that might open a wider conversation moving forward. And then, and then also in terms of us keeping up to date in St. Helena, is there a value of a, sort of a quarterly meeting on all our water and wastewater projects, just a separate meeting? Some sort of special, special focus on our water and wastewater resources? Just so that as we move forward, we're always staying up to date with where we are in these projects. Because sometimes I think when they're in the midst of all our other decision-making, we sometimes lose track of where we are in these very, you know, really critical, most critical of infrastructure projects. Those are just some thoughts I have on the, on the water aspects.
Okay, thank you. I've made a, a note of that as well.
Thank you.
April, can you flip to the next? Well.
I did, I do see Councilmember Chateau's hand raised, so I didn't know she saw a lot of question.
Thank you. Councilmember Chateau?
Thank you so much. I was just thinking again about the way that the water can taste so bad when we get it coming from Napa or even our own water when it goes really low like we're experiencing. Is there anything on any of these projects about being able to add filtration and improving the taste of that water or, and/or can that be something that we add for future conversations like the mayor just brought up? If we are reaching out to other jurisdictions to talk about what are projects we can do so that when we get this really expensive water, it also tastes reasonable?
And can you help out on that?
Sure. The water that we're getting, so when we, we have water taste issues a few years back here in St. Helena. Found out it was, it tasted, it went back and forth between tasting kind of musty and moldy to also then sometimes really tasting like a lot of chlorine. And our city manager found out that we could add a filter and that really improved the quality. It was amazing what a difference that made. And now we're tasting and some homes and residences are having that same problem again as we're drawing from Napa. So I'm wondering if there's a way that we can do that for that water so that we can improve it. And here for us, it wasn't a super expensive fix, but it made a really big difference.
Okay. Clayton, can you help?
Yes, sir. So there would be things that we could discuss with Napa and things we could do internally. I'd be interested in seeing if there was anything that could be done at Dwyer Pump Station or even the tank that maintains this northernmost part of the Napa system. Staff has started research on inline filters and treatment at the R P S site to address taste and odor issues that are more, they're related to total organics that we are getting from Napa water. And it's a seasonal type thing that Napa deals with, same as we will with our reservoir. But it, it has been, it is being researched on the staff end.
Thank you so much. Yeah, it does. It's something that comes and goes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other water-related questions before we move forward?
John, do you think this list is complete? Is there anything else that you would add to it?
Willingly. I'm sorry. It, it is as complete as I know it can be for right now. We've got some pretty significant prob- projects, particularly up at the Bell Canyon site. And it's, it's taken a lot of our focus and honestly. And it's, it's taken a lot of our focus and honestly, um, that, once we get that behind us, I think it's going to, um, open up the door a little bit for upgrading some of our other infrastructure, things like what was just discussed, um, filtration and a few other, a few other items that I think are needed, um, but some of these larger projects are so all-encompassing and, and, um, almost overwhelming for staff to keep track of, um, that expanding beyond this list is probably honestly not practical.
Okay, thank you.
And I think just to sort of support that, that question is, is our, our, um, making sure that I, I, and I'm hope I'm resonating, uh, with Mr. Hall here, that, uh, if you see things that need to be done immediately or something comes up, please, uh, please let us know or, uh, you know, as we move forward, we know you've got, you're, you're the ones with the eyes on the situation. So, uh, uh, when you see something of importance, please find a way to, to let us know if we need to move forward.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mayor, I would just like to add that with our underground utilities master plan that addresses water sewer and storm drain, uh, infrastructure deficiencies and really looks forward. Uh, there is, uh, that document is really a source of, uh, where investments in the future need to be made in our system. So as we, uh, finalize the review of that document, it really becomes the blueprint for, um, future projects that will be, uh, that will be found for both the water system, the wastewater system and our storm drain systems.
Thank you. And we'll go back to Mr. Wangar.
Right. We'll move on to wastewater. Um, the list is significantly shorter for wastewater. Um, and the first one is by far and away the largest one that we have going. Um, this is the upgrade to the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, this is obviously, uh, a crucial project on a number of different, um, facets. Once this project is, um, up and running, the one thing that it will do is allow us to produce, um, Title twenty-two, uh, recycled water, which is going to be able to offset, um, some of the water use that we currently have. Uh, we're looking at actually irrigating some of the city parks with it as well as, um, we were hoping to talk to, um, vineyard, um, entities along the way of the, the path of the pipeline that will be coming out of the plant to see if there's any interest in, in utilizing um, our water as opposed to, uh, any of the city water that some of those vineyards use. So, um, this project is currently, um, I believe we've received all the approvals except for the final uh, environmental blessing from USDA. Um, Dr. Mitz and her staff have done an outstanding job in getting all the documentation with respect to the financial background to USDA. And what we were told about a week ago, um, from USDA is we are looking at anywhere from two to four weeks, uh, at which point they will give us full authorization to put that project out to bid. So we're hoping that, uh, we will have this project out to bid in June, be able to come back to the council, uh, hopefully in July. If, if not the first meeting in August, um, for an award and then immediately pursue construction on this project.
The, on the, on the wastewater treatment plant, one small aspect, uh, is this redwood forest that had come before us in terms of looking at using some space out in the spray fields. And, uh, a question had come up of whether some small amount of planting could occur this year, even a small symbolic amount, just to keep the project in a sense, moving forward. In your, in your estimation, is that something that could happen without interrupting any final approvals that need to happen?
I believe it can because I think that's, I, I believe that's a standalone, um, item. Uh, now, were you talking about prior to June thirtieth or in fiscal year twenty-two?
Oh, um, I would say sometime this summer, so perhaps spanning the, the two. And I think, I think the, the, uh, sort of expectation would not have to be some significant amount of planting, but just something moving forward that wouldn't over, um, you know, put, put the city in a bad spot with any upcoming final approvals.
I will, yeah, I will, I will follow up with that and, and see if that would represent any issues.
Okay, yeah. And I mean, I think even whatever smallest amount you might think that symbolically could be done, but would fit without throwing anything off.
Okay.
Uh, is, is that project done with, uh, volunteers or is, is that staff, uh, manpower?
I believe that's a volunteer, uh, project, um, that's being proposed. And the one sort of hurdle would be making sure it's not stepping on the toes of the city as, for these approvals. So, uh, so that, that's, uh, it on that. And then if we just keep moving?
Yes. So, uh, S eighteen dash seventy, S A, S eighteen dash seventy is similar to, uh, the water. We are looking at, um, getting some of our older sewer mains replaced. And we're hoping to have that, uh, done at one project per year. And as the city manager indicated, when the, the master plan, uh, we're right at the, right in the, on the verge of having those completed, that will help us to, uh, identify not only which ones, but what priority, uh, that we'll be replacing those.
And Councilmember Hall?
Thank you. I was just thinking about, um, purple pipe and how or where, uh, that can get worked into our, uh, network on an ongoing basis. And I, I really don't know the scope of the sewer mains and the annual, annual work here, but I was just curious, John, if you've got any thoughts there?
Um, we actually are under contract with Hydroscience right now for the first, um, portion of laying out where our recycled water mains are going to go. Um, and that, that first thrust, um, goes from the what wastewater treatment plant up by the college as well as down Mill Street, uh, connecting over to Grayson and down Grayson to be able to, uh, irrigate the Crane, Crane Park. So, um, there is some, um, there is some idea, I believe, of kind of an overall larger scheme of where those pipes are gonna go. I would have to double check with Hydroscience, uh, and other staff members to, um, follow up on that just simply because I haven't been here long enough to, to have intimate details on that. But, um, there needs to be kind of a long-term plan. And I think where you're going, uh, Councilmember Hall, it would be that if we were in the street doing a sewer replacement project and it happened to be a street where ultimately, uh, rec- recycled water main would go, um, of doing those projects concurrently, is that what?
Uh, that's right.
Okay.
And I had one question on, you know, we as a policy have the one percent. If we were to discuss moving that number to, I say, a two percent or, or something, uh, is that just, is that a cost of funding, uh, or capacity? If, if we decided to move in that direction, uh, of a larger number, say two percent, uh, I'm seeing, Miss, uh, City Manager Press Wish.
This is a, right now, it's an issue of financial capacity. Uh, every dollar we have in this fund is being used to deliver the wastewater treatment plant upgrade. So this is a, this goes back to our prior budget workshop where we talked about an optimal investment of dollars into our storm drain system, uh, and other utilities. This is just another one of those where we find ourselves, uh, you know, confronted with a challenge of significant in, infrastructure deficiencies that have built up over decades. And, uh, this is one where we're going to have trouble investing optimally in our sewer system because we're delivering a, an extraordinarily large project in this tertiary upgrade to the wastewater plant. And, uh, as you know, with these cost estimates, we've had to try to value engineer this to ensure that the fund itself, uh, without additional support is able to deliver this project. But it, it, it required, what it means is that we have to set aside other investments that we could or really should be making. That includes not only the one percent of sewer mains annually or, or greater, Mayor, but also the Cornell Pump Station, which we know is, it's shovel-ready, it's ready to go. It's about a million dollars, but it's, it's, those are dollars that we don't have yet until, um, we either find a grant, uh, or we move through another rate adjustment.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Uh, and I'll pass it to Mr. Wangar.
Mark, I'm sorry, are, are you saying that, uh, if, if I tally up the total estimated costs on these other, other four projects here, um, the, uh, if we had that money, we would be progressing on all these items right now?
Particularly with the Cornell Pump Station, it's, it's a project that could have gone earlier, but we were concerned about its impact on our ability to deliver the, the very significant tertiary upgrade, which we're under a cease and desist order for. So it's been held at, you know, complete design while seeking grant funding, keeping our fingers crossed that we could potentially find through the bidding process that the project could be delivered for less than initially estimated and have additional resources able left over and able to, uh, be applied to the Cornell Pump Station. But it's a good example of a project that's essentially on the shelf, ready to go and, uh, just needs dollars. And it's, eh, and the wastewater treatment plant upgrade project is, uh, you know, probably a once every two-generation project. It's, uh, it, it's very difficult for, uh, from an economy of scale standpoint for us, uh, a city our size to deliver something that large. And, and that's the challenge. It, it has swallowed up a lot of these dollars.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and so we'll go back to Mr. Wangar.
Okay, speaking of, uh, Cornell Pump Station, that's the next one on the list, eighteen dash seventy-one. As the city manager just mentioned, um, this project is, is pretty much ready to go, but it is being, um, pushed out into further years, um, due to available funding. S eighteen dash seventy-three is, uh, wet weather flow monitoring. This is, um, a project, uh, that will take place at some point in the future when funding becomes available, but it's to identify where we're getting inflow and infiltration of groundwater and/or storm water into our, uh, sewer system. A lot of this has to do, um, with some kind of annual CCTV inspection, uh, of the lines, which, um, is, is pretty straightforward to do. But, uh, again, this project is going to be put on hold for a little while until, uh, the wastewater treatment plant is behind us. And then I believe it's the last project, S twenty-one oh one. We, we kind of already, um, talked about this, this project, um, is providing pump stations, um, to distribute the recycled water that, um, are going to our spray fields and also to provide recycled water to customers, um, in the mainline system once that gets extended. So that is, uh, again, forecast to be part of this next year's project through Hydroscience and the work that they're doing. And if, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, April, is that the last slide with wastewater?
I'm seeing Councilmember Hardy's hand up.
Yes.
Um, you know, I, I, I think I'm gonna defer my question, but I am wondering, uh, Mayor Ellsworth, whether there, there will be a break upcoming here or?
That's my thought. As we get, uh, finish this item, we'll take a ten-minute break if that sounds acceptable.
Thank you.
And I'm seeing, uh, Councilmember Doring.
Thank you, Mayor. Just, uh, one question that comes up from the community. Uh, I'm not sure who this question is directed to, but it's a question I receive a lot. And it's basically, goes like this. We've increased our wastewater and sewer, our, our water rates to build up these funds for these capital improvements. Are those funds actually being used for these capital improvements? Are they being set aside or are they being used for other reasons? Uh, you know, why, why are we raising our rates if we're not getting these, these projects done? And obviously, we're gonna be looking forward to another round of, of rate increases. And I don't know what the answer is, but it's a good question.
I can, I can start, um, and then I'd invite our finance director to fill in some additional details. But these funds are being used to deliver projects. And so on the water fund, the removal of the York Creek Dam was a, an extraordinarily significant investment. Um, it was supplemented by one point six million dollars of general fund money to reduce the, the impact on the water fund. And so that one, I, I think our, uh, finance director can speak to the total cost, uh, in recent years. But the total, total cumulative cost of that project, I believe, was nine million dollars over time, in excess of nine million dollars. And then on the wastewater front, uh, this is a sixteen million dollar investment under another, these, these are both, I'm speaking to two cease and desist orders that have uh, gobbled up, uh, an extraordinary amount of our resources in both funds. So, uh, and, and Director Mitz, you may be able to augment my comments.
I definitely can, and I'll share my screen really quickly so I can kind of have a visual in place. So when you're looking at the individual CIP budgets for the, the larger document, and let me, I see a lot of squinting, so let me make it a little bigger. So when you'll see the funding sources down here, if you see anything that says water capital improvement, wastewater capital improvement, what that is, is earlier when we talked about the residual in the water wastewater operating budget. So when you see the transfers over to capital, what we're doing is a lot of these projects, uh, were forecasted to be partly cash-funded and partly, um, debt, debt financing. So when it's cash-funded, what we do is we take the residual balance or net of what our revenues less our expenses. That net, we plug that right over into the capital improvement fund, which is a complete, it's part of the water or the wastewater enterprise, but it's, it's set aside for projects like this. So for this particular project, you'll see for Tank Two Rehabilitation, what we've already done is we've already put money, taken it from the operations side out of that net. We've put it over into the water or the wastewater CIP. And so that is where the funding is coming from, from these projects. In addition, when you look at the summary sheet, so at the beginning of the, all capital improvement projects within the, uh, the detailed reports, you'll see here's a summary report. We have each of the projects and below you have the project funding sources. So for instance, for here, you'll have water capital improvement. So those are funds that have already been set aside. In addition, it will show any grant funding, um, that we may be receiving for certain projects. And in the instance of the water fund, we are looking at taking out some debt, which was part of what was programmed in our, in our five-year uh, rate structure, as well as anything that's appropriate to use impact fees. So you'll see that consistently through all of the four project categories for CIPs. So I hope that explains it a little bit more for the council as well as for the public.
Uh, Vice Mayor Doring, does that give some, some?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, when we set our rates, we'd look at a five-year horizon and we try to figure out, hey, this is what this, this project is going to cost. And then we pass that on to the ratepayers through the enterprise, correct? And, and so we don't get those, if we don't get those projects done, uh, costs go up. And so we're gonna continually have to raise rates in the next five-year horizon. I think that's a concern, uh, that, you know, delay, uh, typically increases costs. But yes, you have explained it, and I think that's a good explanation for the public too. Thank you. One, one other thing while I have, uh, time, I, back on the Mills Lane project, uh, the, the,
The storm?
Storm, the storm drain improvement. One, 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 uh, number also jumps out at me and maybe this, uh, you can get with the city attorney on this one. It says legal services, eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. I would be really curious to see what the assumptions are built into that number because that seems to, well, you know, I would say it seems fairly high. Other lawyers may say, well, no, but it would be interesting to see what the assumptions were, uh, to come up with that number because I, I think we might be able to drill that one down a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you. And if there, I'm gonna open it to public comment, uh, because we, we moved into this other section of the, of the first item. I'll open it to public comment, then bring it back, and then we'll look for our break. Uh, so I'm gonna look to our city clerk to see if we have a public comment.
We do. Mark, I'm gonna allow you to speak and you can address the council.
Thank you all. Um, I have a couple quick comments, one, one very simple one. I thought that the tennis court lights were going to be included in the capital projects this year and, and I-
And, and I, I see that, I don't think the tennis court lights are there. They have Crane Park, but not the tennis courts. And we've been sort of waiting and waiting and waiting and waiting for that to happen for probably ten or fifteen years. So I, I think the park and rec commission had actually submitted that. But a bigger, huge issue, and I, I hope this is being made perfectly clear to the public, is, and I understand the importance to, I guess, the downtown folks and, you know, from a trip and fall sort of issue. But the downtown sidewalk project is pulling four point eight million dollars out of Measure T road funds. So I just want to make sure the public is well aware that that downtown sidewalk is pulling four point eight million. You know, and this project still, we really don't know, because we don't have the bids. You know, but if you remember way back a few years ago, the initial estimate for that project was three point six million. And now it's six point five, and who knows what it's gonna be when it goes out to bid. So I just want to make that very, very clear to everybody. And I'm a little bit surprised, and I think maybe way the accounting will work is it won't appear as such. But because of how you're taking two point four million dollars of a loan out of the general fund to pay for the streetscape, you're effectively reducing the cash reserves that you have. So as much as council has been, you know, financially judicious and not wanting to go below twenty-five percent in reserves and really wanting to be at thirty percent in reserves, you know, you're, you're, although it won't show up that way, by drawing this two point four million out of the general fund cash, you are reducing the reserves significantly. So I just want to make sure everybody really sees that this project is a very, very big expensive project, and it's impacting us doing the roadwork, you know, faster or as fast as we once said, when, when everybody ended up voting for Measure T, because they thought Measure T was for roads. And I understand sidewalks are part of Measure T, but this is a really big project that wasn't contemplated back in the day that we all voted for Measure T. So anyway, that's, um, those are my quick comments.
Thank you. Is there any clarification on the tennis court lighting related to the Crane Park lighting? Dr. Mits?
I am, I am looking into that, and I will provide an update to city council, because the Parks and Rec Commission did endorse several projects, and I thought I had them all included. If I inadvertently left one off before the final CIP is approved by city council, I will definitely bring that back. And it looks like Clayton might have a little more clarification, because he was at those meetings as well.
Yes, ma'am. We've reached out to the consultant, and there'll be a full update on where that project is at at the June PRC meeting.
Just one, one other question. Is there a, sorry, are we done with public comment?
Yeah, let me bring it back. And I'll just clarify, PRC is the Parks and Rec Commission. Let me check with Cindy and see if we have additional public comment.
There is no additional public comment.
Okay, so a close, a close public comment, bring it back to the council member hall.
Thank you. I was just curious, and maybe I'm not recalling this correctly, but was there a conversation or a project at one point about a new Pope Street Bridge across to the trail, sort of straightening that out? And if so, I, I didn't see it on today's list.
Mark, do you have any background on where, I remember that discussion at some point, but we, where is that sitting?
So there's, there's not an active project on, on that. There was a project about, I believe, ten years ago where there was funding identified and, and direction was provided not to proceed. But that would need to be resurrected from scratch, essentially. And, and that's essentially where that particular idea is.
Thank you.
And of course, there are different approaches to how that's done. Is it a single lane bridge? And you continue to use the existing bridge? Or is it a brand new bridge where you leave the existing bridge as a pedestrian bike bridge? So we would need to talk about alternatives.
Okay. And just one other follow-up question for, for John. When you look at this list and compare the worklist to other cities in which you're engaged, and you look at our, our current staffing model, anyway, as you work through this process, I hope you're, you're considering all of this new investment that we're trying to get done this year and over the next couple of years, and whether or not our staffing is currently adequate. And in particular, ongoing preventative maintenance programs are, are adequate. So we finally begin getting ahead of the curve in, in some of this, instead of just plugging holes year after year.
Yeah, the city manager and I have had some discussions on that. And I know the primary focus is to get the, the permanent public works director, city engineer on board. But after that, my observations, to speak directly to your question, is the number of capital projects going on within the city are significant. They are, they're quite a ways above and beyond what most cities of this size typically have on a year in, year out basis. Part of the good news is that the city has really capitalized on being able to use consultants for a lot of the work, which is great. But in order to have that be successful, there also has to be some oversight of those consultants to ensure that things are going the way the city wants them to go. So I believe after the new public works director, city engineer is hired, there is also a position for a deputy public works director. My observations is there does need to be more staff in the public works engineering side of things to help oversee the myriad of projects that we have going on. And we do have some larger projects, obviously, that are, that are currently being worked on. But even after that gets behind us and we, we get those projects constructed, there's, there's going to be a long-term need, as you mentioned, for infrastructure upgrades, replacements, enhancements, so on and so forth, that I, that I can see a long-term need for additional staffing.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm seeing Dr. Mits.
I just also wanted to, to provide a point of clarification regarding the comment from Mr. Smithers about the general fund loan. The initial intention was to borrow funds against the general fund. However, to, to be able to fund that, the two point four million dollars of the downtown sidewalk project. However, we did shift gears at the beginning of COVID, knowing that we did utilize a significant portion of our general fund reserves to, you know, and still trying to maintain the thirty percent reserve level. Since then, we have actually looked at some other options. So one of the other options that we are, we are looking at for that two point four million dollar loan, which will not be from the general fund, is to actually look at current assets the city owns. So one of them would be a general fund asset, and it has to be an essential asset. And it was some things that our municipal finance advisor, Mr. Decker, had addressed with the council before, where we could potentially use the equity that we have in the fire station, for instance, to be able to borrow against. And then what the city would do is we pay back that loan from Measure T proceeds over. We can do it either a five, ten, or a fifteen year. So in our current CIP draft, we did assume the ten-year. We kind of picked the middle ground on that, because we did not want to tie up the asset for that long. The other option, too, is that we're currently looking at is when Mr. Wangers calls with the NVTA recently, there might be other unexpended Measure T funds that other agencies have not spent that we can actually borrow against as well. So we're looking for things to borrow against, anything opposed to the general fund, because at this point, with the financial hit that we did take because of COVID, and it's not prudent to borrow against that fund. So I did want to provide some clarification to Mr. Smithers, the council, as well as the public.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm seeing Mr. Presswich.
Just briefly, update on the public works director recruitment. We anticipate a start date of June thirtieth for that individual, and we have now an active recruitment for the assistant public works director position.
Thank you. So with that, Mr. Wanger, if that wraps this up, this section, I'll say, are we looking like we're there? Mr. Wanger?
Yes.
So thank you to you. Thank you, Mr. Church. Thank you, Dr. Mits and Mr. Presswich. And we will take a break, a ten-minute break, and let's come back at eleven-ten and, and get into our next item and try to get that wrapped up by noon. Cindy, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, very good. I'll wait till we start seeing folks. Okay, very good. I'll wait till we start seeing folks repopulate here. Okay, we're getting our council back. Let's see, I see Vice Mayor Doring. Once folks come back on, we'll be able to get rolling. Okay, I am seeing everybody on now. And so with that, we'll come back to the meeting. Cindy, are you ready to get rolling?
Jeff, just so you know, it looks like I'm gonna have to jump at 11:30. My apologies to all. Just don't let that trouble you. Just march right on.
Hey, thanks for the heads up. Appreciate it. So Cindy, are we ready to go?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. We're now on item 5.2, and this is a continuation from the meeting on Tuesday. This is the review and confirmation of the City of St. Helena's five-year street CIP plan and overview of summer 2020. 2021 street maintenance projects.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a continuation of what we did on Tuesday night, just wanted to touch on a few basic things. First of all, as the council knows, in 2018, the Measure T was approved by the voters. And part of that was obviously coming up with adequate monies to address maintenance needs for roads within the cities within the county. And as we presented on Tuesday night, we recently completed an update to the pavement management program. And that program is actually used to guide to identify what streets should be treated to maximize the investment of Measure T monies. Also, I will just remind the council that the PMP is not a perfect program. Certainly, it comes out with great intentions, but it doesn't mean that we can't include other streets. Whether we hear large complaints from the public or other things, that we do have the ability to include those streets as well. So attached to the Stafford port, I'm going to share my screen here. There is a list of streets. It's a five-year list of streets, and those streets primarily came from the pavement management program. So as I'm showing on the screen, there's a whole list of streets with the beginning and ending locations, as well as the projected treatment type. There's a number of streets that are getting complete asphalt overlays, some micro-surfacing, and some ceiling cracks, but the majority of them are either overlays or micro-surfacing. So this is a list of what we're estimating to be incorporated into the next five years of projects. What, just so the council knows, one of the reasons why we haven't separated this identically into each year, and actually before I get to that, what I wanted to share is, did my screen just change? Hopefully it show a map?
Yep.
Okay, so this is, this is a visual map of the list that I just showed you. This shows all the number of streets that are projected to take place for paving in the next five years. And the red, just for the council and public's information, the red primarily means where we are doing asphalt overlays. And the blue is where we're planning on doing micro-surfacing, which is an aggressive slurry seal. And then there's a few streets that have green, which are crack surface or crack ceiling, excuse me. But that gives kind of a visual picture of what that five-year list is. And what I will point out is on this slide, as you can see at the top at the title, it includes all streets within an $800,000 construction budget each year. So if, if the council wanted to stick with that $800,000, this is what we would end up seeing done in the next five years. If you wanted to go to something more aggressive than that, and just so you know, this level of monies allocated each year would actually increase our pavement condition index of our streets citywide from 50, which is its current status, to 55 in five years. I did run a scenario just for the council's information for.
John, I'm gonna interrupt. I see Councilmember Hall. I just want to see if he needed clarification on where we are right now.
No, thank you. And it sounds like John might be commenting on my question here momentarily. Thank you.
Okay. So I did run a scenario just to see how sensitive things were. But to increase the pavement condition index of all streets within the city, an average of 10 points over the next five years, that $800,000 number would have to be increased into the mid $900,000, I believe it was close, close to $1 million a year that would have to be put into an annual paving program. But that would, in essence, double the increase that we're looking at, just to give the council some perspective on what dollar changes can mean, what changes with respect to touching each street, so.
So that's a, perhaps you're saying about $150,000 increase would give us a substantial benefit?
Yeah, it's $150,000 to $200,000 increase, and I actually have a map showing that, but I don't have up yet. But if the council was interested, I could get that and show the council as well, but.
I think there would be value in seeing that.
Okay.
Can I judge him, Director Wenger, just for a moment? Because I want to emphasize something for everyone's, just for perspective, and that is that Measure T, which is a Napa County-wide commitment to investing in our street infrastructure, is making these investments possible. Without this, we would not be able to deliver $800,000 of investments each year, and this is a 25-year tax. So we're in the infancy of this because the dollars began flowing in, I believe, the fourth quarter of 2000 fiscal year 1718. So without our local voter support for this investment, we would be unable to sustain a quality level of investment without drawing significantly additional funds from our general fund, which would compromise the delivery of other service levels within the city. So I just want to say thank you to the voters of Napa County. My observation has been through the years that counties that take the time, or cities that take the time to invest in their, in their street infrastructure, that's one of the ways that streets can maintain themselves or improve. But without that, the available gas tax funding, and in also, in our case, also newly identified SB1 funding is just inadequate to allow the city to maintain its infrastructure in a quality way without significant support from the general fund.
Thank you. I'm seeing that, Councilmember Hall.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Just going back to Tuesday night, so the $800,000 investment each year for five years. If I recall, after five years, and after all of that investment and going through this program, we're essentially ending with the same view going forward, that we still have a nine or $10 million project ahead of us, just like today. In other words, this level essentially maintains our current status. It looks like we're improving, but over a five-year period, at the end of that, we're basically going to be faced with another $10 million of street repairs. Is that roughly correct?
That is roughly correct. What the pavement management program showed is that with an $800,000 investment, our deferred maintenance would go from its current level of $10 million of backlog maintenance down to $9 million after five years. So it would, there would be roughly a 10%
improvement.
Decrease, but it wasn't, it wasn't a sizable decrease.
Right. So if, as a city, we wanted to get ahead of the curve, even though all of this money is coming from Measure T today, but if we wanted to get ahead of the curve, we could have a conversation around, you know, do we want to do 900? Do we want to do 1.2, 1.4, 1.5, where we want to be in five years? And what does that actually look like? What will it, you know, do we want to see noticeable improvement in our streets in five years after this sort of investment, or even after 800 grand every single year for five years right now will be basically where we are today? So at some point, I don't know how to queue that up, or if this is the form for that, but, or obviously if there's any funding for it, but.
And Mr. Wenger, that. I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's all I wanted to raise.
The additional map that you had brought up, with it looked at additional funding, is that something that could start to, in a sense, instead of just keeping us even, start to move us ahead? With that, if we can locate that extra investment?
Yeah, so what you see before you is the map that I had up before. But this, and it's a little bit hard to see because of the colors, this map shows all the streets that would be treated in five years that would increase our PCI by 10 points. And I went back and quickly looked at the budget that that would require, and it would require increasing from $800,000 a year to $950,000 a year. So with $150,000 a year additional expense thrown into street maintenance, you can treat, and again, I'll kind of go back and forth between the maps. It's a little bit hard to tell, but it actually does include quite a bit more streets within that five-year period. So this gives council a little bit of an idea of what that difference of $150,000 extra a year would be.
And that extra 150 is actually construction costs, not necessarily design or anything like that.
Correct, correct.
And is there a calculation to, to go into where Councilmember Hall was talking? How we look in five years, you know, dropping from $10 million to $9 million using this measurement with this additional mapping? Is there a way to calculate how we would be in five years related to?
There is. There absolutely is, and I'm not sure, if I can look real quick. I don't have the number right in front of me, but I can certainly get back to the council with respect to what that brings our deferred maintenance down to. I would, I would imagine at the end of five years, we're probably going to be dropping from $10 million, most likely down to probably somewhere in the $6 to $7 million range. So it'll make a, it'll make a pretty good, pretty good difference.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any council comments here?
I just had a comment, Mayor. My raised hand is not on my screen. Mr. Wenger, I guess it's not so much, I mean, you could throw three or four million dollars a year into each of these scenarios, but, but really, I'm sorry, I was getting a knock on the door. We only have so much staff capacity to deliver the project. So we have to balance the amount of money that we have, and actually the ability every year to spend that money. And what's your sense of what our capacity is now in terms of the amount of money that we can actually spend each year? There's got to be a relationship there, correct?
There is, and I will tell you that of all capital projects, generally, these kind of street projects where you're resurfacing streets are about the most straightforward that it gets. To give you an example, from a consultant standpoint, design costs on a typical infrastructure project can run roughly around 15%. For most street rehabilitation projects, design cost efforts are roughly half of that. The other thing that the city has done in the past is you've contracted out for construction management inspection services, which are certainly essential in these to make sure that things are going down correctly. All of that is included within the budgeting that we showed in the CIP. We have allocations for design and construction management and inspection each year. But to specifically answer your question, if you were to have a staff member in one of the projects that they were to oversee as a consultant, putting together the annual street package, I don't think that would be a huge drain on staff time. Honestly, like I said, they're pretty straightforward projects, and I don't think it would be, for instance, to do $1 million a year versus $800,000 a year, you probably wouldn't see a difference with respect to the staff time that would involve. It would be a little bit more design and certainly more construction management inspection time when you got out to actually do the work, because it would take longer, because the projects would be bigger. But that's, that's about it.
Thank you.
Okay. Please proceed.
The, the one thing that I did want to mention is, you know, we've provided the overall list of projects that are projected to be done in five years, which is on the map that's on the screen. But the one thing that we do, the pavement management program spits out projects, and it will literally give you, from a computer program standpoint, the order in which to do streets that will get you the biggest bang for your buck. But the issue is, sometimes those streets can be geographically all over the place in the city, and you can do one block of one street one year and come back a year or two later and do the next block. So we are just about completed with taking the list of streets from the PMP and doing two things. Number one, grouping them geographically, close to one another, as well as type of treatment, whether it be slurry ceiling or micro-surfacing or paving. We're grouping those, and then the other thing that we're doing is comparing it with underground infrastructure projects, whether that be sewer water or storm rain projects, and kind of melding that all together to make sure that we, what we come up with is not only making sense, but that we don't expend paving monies, and then two or three years later, come back and do a sewer or water replacement job. So we're just about done that effort. Matter of fact, that's been put in my plate in the last couple of days to review. So I just wanted to let council know that at the staff level, we absolutely try to do our best to make sure that we're not going to be putting good money in paving and then follow up a couple of years later by disrupting disruption from a utility project.
That's great. Thank you.
Yeah. And that, for the most part, that concludes the five-year scenario. We also have, just, just so the council is aware, the project R1979, I just pulled the map up on the screen that shows which streets are included within the R1979 project, and it's streets around the Cronella Drive area as well as Brown Street. But those are the streets that are included within this, this year's project. Again, this is the second year of a two-year project that had already been designed. The first portion of that's already been constructed. This would encompass these streets, and I believe the overall expenditure between construction and oversight is about one, just a little under 1.2 million. So this gives a council the idea of which streets are included in this year's project. So any, any questions on that?
Are there additional streets for this summer, or is this it planned for this summer?
So this, the streets that are shown here on this map are, they're 100% shovel-ready. The plans and specifications are done at this point. If we wanted to include additional streets, we'd have to put together a separate package to add on additional streets, and we'd have to do that as a separate project to a later time, whether that be, you know, whether that could get done potentially for release in the fall or have it ready for springtime next year. We can certainly do that.
One consideration I had is looking at College Avenue with our, our. One consideration I had is looking at College Avenue with our, our, our interest in making the move over to College Avenue for the City Hall, and with the, the, the upgrade to the crossing on Pope there, and with, with the other entities on College, is there a way to look at College Avenue as something we could potentially get to this year?
Yes, we could.
John, do you know what the schedule is for the Cronella neighborhood?
So if the council gives the nod to this presentation, I would say we would most likely have the project out to bid probably by the end of next week. And we would want somewhere between a three- to four-week bid time for contractors. So that means we would open up bids towards the end of, towards the end of June. And we would be looking at hopefully bringing something to the council for a war to that project in July. And if I'm not mistaken, I think there's only one council meeting in July. So we would be looking at hitting that council meeting. And then, so construction would most likely begin in either later July or beginning of August. And I would say, based on the streets that we have here, you're probably looking at, you know, a month and a half to two months' worth of construction effort.
Thank you.
I'm seeing Vice Mayor Doring.
Yeah, I think one area that I don't think really made it through the testing is Oak from Adams Street to basically Madrona. I don't even see that even in the next five years, and I think that that is significantly deteriorating. I'm not suggesting that's something we jump on this year, but, you know, especially at the intersection of Adams and Oak, it is fairly significant. That may be one that you may want to just walk and kind of get a sense of that, because I don't think that could wait for five years. I understand it may not get done this year, but that one may, and I know everybody has a street, but, you know, frankly, I think my, my Spring Mountain Court doesn't even need to be on there. Don't tell my neighbors that, but it looks like it's in good shape to me. But I'm, I'm concerned about Oak in that area. Thank you.
And I support the concern there. It is a street that's a thoroughfare, or connects our schools, et cetera. There's a value in, I'm echoing, but I think there's a value in looking at Oak if, if there's a possibility.
Okay. We can, we can certainly take a look at that.
And seeing Councilmember Chateau.
Thank you. I just unmuted myself. Sorry, it took me a minute. When I saw that, the map of what we can do this summer too, my first reaction was, oh, it just didn't seem to be as big as I was hoping to have the impact. So just the reality of what it costs to do these projects really hit me. And so when you do talk about how if we spend another $200,000, we could increase it by double what we could do with those points, I'm really interested in doing that, because we saw how much our community wants our roads to be improved. And so we haven't heard yet what that means, what the trade-off is for where we would get those funds. But I would love to have that conversation and talk about that.
So are we, is there anything else on this presentation, Mr. Wenger?
No, no. The only, the only thing that I will mention is, you know, in the staff report, we have looked at the fiscal impacts for this. And what we're doing is seeking confirmation from the council for the five-year list of projects that we have shown. And then the final Measure T list will be brought back to the council at a later date for approval via resolution. But at least you have an idea of this. If, if increasing the annual budget from, say, $800,000 to $950,000, I would have to work with Dr. Metz, as well as the city manager, to see what that did with respect to our overall program. But if that was, if that was something that was of interest, then we could take a look at that as well and bring that back to the future, in the, in a future meeting at the council.
I'm seeing nods in support of that, and I support that as well. Thank you for, for presenting that concept. I'm gonna, if there's no council comment here, I'm gonna open it to public comment and see if we have any. I'll, I'll go to our city clerk.
There is no public comment.
Very good. So I'll bring it back to council. Are there any additional comments here on where we are with this? Seeing none, I will thank very much our staff, Mr. Wenger, for really keeping a focus on this. Thank you to the city manager as well, and Dr. Metz, and to Mr. Church for all the information today. And Mark, is there anything else we need to, to touch on before we adjourn?
No, I was just confirming that we didn't need any formal action, just direction and confirmation. So I, I feel that we have that, and the feedback on the streets is helpful as well, because we'll be bringing you back some information on the general fund and options on June 8th, preceding our anticipated budget adoption in late June.
Very good. Well, thank you, everybody. Thanks for the special focus today on this, and we will adjourn and see you at the next meeting.
Thank you all.
Thank you.